Welcome to our October meeting. My name is Alexis Folguers, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's evening, for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call shall be omitted. As the RTM doesn't have a meeting in November, closer to Veterans Day, this evening I would like to recognize six RTM members who admirably serve their country without reservation. And I've also asked them, asked them to lead us in the pledge. But before I do that, I'm going to call them up each individually and you can, I'll call them up, you come to the front, and then I'm going to tell you a little bit about who they are. Brian Maher of District Six, please. You're going to go to the front. Joe Benoit, District Five. Kip Bergweger, District Eight. Bob McKnight, District Four. James Waters, District Twelve. And Daniel Izzo, who's District Six, but I believe is participating online. If there's a way we can get him online, I don't know if he's on there. So I'm going to read you a little bit about these fine gentlemen before they lead us in the pledge. Brian Maher served between 1963 and 1968 as a member of the U.S. Army Artillery with a, and he left the service with the rank of captain. He was deployed to both South Korea, Fort Sill, and three years in Germany. Joe Benoit, U.S. Navy Vietnam Veteran, served from 1968 to 1972, achieved the rank of Third Class Petty Officer, Hull Maintenance Technician. Kip Bergweger, U.S. Army Vietnam Veteran, served from 1964 through 1966. He was involved with military intelligence and received the Bronze Star for Meritorious Service. Bob McKnight, U.S. Army Staff Sergeant, Vietnam Combat Veteran, and he served from 1967 through 1970. James Waters, U.S. Naval Lieutenant Commander, Navy SEALs, served from 2006 through 2018. He served combat in Afghanistan. He was awarded the Bronze Medal and the Joint Services Commendation with Valor Medal. Daniel Izzo, who's not with us, he should be here, but he's participating online, served in the Army from 1998 to 2010, trained as a Black Hawk helicopter pilot. He is a veteran of the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, as well as deployments throughout the Middle East and Southeast Asia. He was awarded the Bronze Star for Meritorious Service. So if you would stay, if you would not, if you'd stay standing, and gentlemen, I invite you all to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the September 2023 meeting, the reading of those minutes shall be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the September minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. We have a number of announcements this evening. I'd like to recognize Ms. Susan Fahey, Chairwoman of District 11.
Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to honor Ralph Everett Penny. Ralph Everett Penny was born in 1945 in White Plains, New York, and raised in the towns of White Plains and Scarsdale. Ralph went on to graduate from Deerfield Academy in 1963 and Denison College in 1967 with a degree in history. Upon graduation, Ralph enlisted in the Navy doing two tours of active duty in Vietnam from 1967 to 1970. He remained in naval reserves for more than 30 years, retiring as a decorated captain. After Vietnam, Ralph received his MBA from Columbia University, and in 1972, he went to work for his family's oil and gas business. Later, he earned a CFP, Certified Financial Planner designation, which became his occupational passion. Ralph was always learning, and for those of you who knew him, he could often be seen at our RTM meetings studying his French books. He also could be found walking his dog between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m., right around the corn from here by Stanwych Road and all the way through to Central Middle School. Ralph was married once before with no children, but in 1987, he met the love of his life, Ann Grayde, on a blind date, and they married in 1991. A funny story Ann shared when I went to sit with her is that Ralph told her several years into their marriage that on their first date, he thought she was very weird. Because she had these really weird glasses, they were faded, they had spots, the temples had different colors. And Ann had then confessed to Ralph that she thought she kind of looked pretty cool for their first date and chic. They had a good laugh. If you knew Ralph, it's a little even more humorous because he was not a slave to fashion himself. Ann had two daughters from her previous marriage, Kristen and Carrie, who soon became daughters to Ralph. It was clear upon meeting them at the wake that David Oliver and I went to that they adored each other and Ralph, and he was their second dad. Ralph and Ann moved into their home in Greenwich on Stanwych Road after getting married, and Ann is still there today. The couple traveled often on small Viking River cruises throughout Europe. Another story that Ann shared was that when they were at the bar one night on the small riverboat with friends, they hit a sandbar. The captain came over the loudspeaker and said, "Everything would be fine, and they would be underway in just one moment." Ralph, with his naval training, shouted into the bar, "That's not going to happen," and the entire bar erupted in laughter. Shortly thereafter, they were forced to disembark the boat, laughing and drinking. Ralph was generous with his volunteer time, and over the years, his commitments were varied and meaningful. To list a few, he was president of the White Plains Rotary, Chair of the YMCA for Central Northwest Chester, board and member of the Westchester College Foundation, President of the Hitchcock Presbyterian Church in Scarsdale, board member of the Visiting Nurses Service of Westchester, and led services as a deacon at North Greenwich Congregational Church. You also know he was a district member in Number 11. Last week, the YMCA of CNW honored him with a golf outing where they raised money in his honor, which will be, award will be given consecutively for years following. We will all remember how upbeat Ralph was, smiling and asking about your family, always remembering the names of your children, where they went to school, and if they played a sport. I could go on and on about Ralph, but I'll leave you with what was written by his wife, Ann, that was so beautiful. She said, "Life, life doesn't offer us many guarantees, except for these. If music was playing, Ralph would be dancing. If people were gathering, Ralph would be mixing and mingling. If you needed a hug, he would be hugging you. If you needed some ice cream, he'd be buying. And if you need a friend, he'd always be there." We will miss Ralph Penny. Madam Moderator, we ask now for a moment of silence and for these words to be included in the minutes and a copy sent to Ann Penny so she can share with her daughters Carrie and Kristen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise as we are, or a moment of silence for Ralph Penny? Thank you. If I could recognize Paul Kramer from District Five, who will be offering an announcement on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and evening to all RTM members. A year ago, we voted and passed a bill in favor of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as you know, is an effort on our part to reduce the size of building projects in our town, maintain the fabric of our community and the character of our town, and also to more effectively manage and push back on Hartford's or Connecticut's State Statute 830-G, to manage that and push back. The fund is among the best means that we currently have to build affordable housing in this town and allow the workers who work in this town to afford to live in this town. Secondly, it's the best resource that we have that lets us manage the town's development. And thirdly, it's the most effective way to send a clear message to Hartford that we are united in the sense that local development should be managed locally. So far, the fund has secured agreements with six developers worth approximately $350,000 of the current $650,000 that they have been allotted. This represents approximately 100 affordable housing units. They are also in talks with additional six developers and other projects. So what that means is that very shortly, the fund is going to be out of money to be able to effectively negotiate with these developers. On the desk outside, on the desk outside in this auditorium are donation envelopes that we can place tax deductible donations in to support the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I'm asking you all to please, as you leave, take two envelopes, one for you and one for a neighbor. But don't just take an envelope, it's more important that you put a check in the envelope. The envelope's not going to do anything without a check in it. But if you don't want to do that, you can also go online to Greenwich.gov, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and make an online tax deductible donation. Now, let's unite behind the fund. Let's give these guys the resources they need to continue to do the good work that they've been doing. And let's all unite to send a strong, undeniable message to Hartford that we in Greenwich believe that local planning and development should be managed locally. Thank you.
Thank you. I could recognize Stephen Meskers of District Six, who's offering an announcement about the Department of Human Services Coat Drive, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. You know, as your state representative, I cover six districts. We have four of the community properties there, the housing authority. And I've seen a lot in my visits there. And so now I'm offering on behalf of Human Services the following announcement. Right now, 28% of our Greenwich residents are at or near poverty. Year over year, there has been a greater need for winter coats for this population. For the past two years, the Department of Human Services haven't had enough coats to meet the demand. Our greatest demand is for teens and children. Our goal this year is to collect at least 900 coats. To make it easy for folks like us to donate a new coat, you can scan the flow code on a flyer, and I'll have the moderator, if she would be so kind, to circulate the flyer after this meeting. And you can purchase a coat from our Amazon wishlist. You can buy a nice warm coat for a child for about $50. The code can also be found on the Town Department of Human Services Instagram account. I found it a little difficult, just as a heads up on the code. There are drop-off boxes at the main Greenwich Library, Greenwich Town Hall lobby, and the St. Paul's Episcopal Church on Riverside Avenue. Also, our registrars of voters have kindly invited us to place drop boxes off for coats at the polling stations this year. So please, in between all of our battling about the election, let's think about the people who won't have coats this winter. All of this is an effort to help the most needy and vulnerable among us. Please give generously, early and often. And I offer that on behalf of Human Services.
Thank you. Okay. Before we start our meeting, I just want to remind everybody, if you're participating online and you have, we have live technical support, so that phone number to dial in is 203-992-8383 for our friends online. They can speak with Jenny. And then if you're in the room and you have a problem with your clicker while the vote is open, please raise your hand, get our attention, we'll help you out and potentially hold the vote open or figure out what the problem is until it's resolved. We've been testing, testing, testing for the last two weeks, so I think we're good. We shouldn't have district tabulators, knock wood, but we're going to give it a go, okay? That brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on the reports received. Combined items, 1, 2, 3, and 6, separate, 7 and 8, and items 4 and 5 have been withdrawn.
Is it combined or consent?
Oh, what did, I'm sorry, consent. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Ms. Bazana. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 1, 2, 3, and 6 to our consent calendar. And if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and no discussion on the items, and all we are going to hear is what I am about to say. Item 1 is the nomination of Margarita Albon to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2026. Item 2 is a sum of $500,000 to be appropriated to an account Z3805912024323 for a fire ladder truck. Item number 3 is a maintenance agreement and encroachment permit between the town and the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation, allowing Phase 1 of the Putnam Avenue Planting Plan. And item 6 is a sum of $122,700 to be appropriated to various accounts for office supplies, maintenance furniture fixtures, work transfer to and from departments, tuition payments, travel expenses, renovation security improvements for the registrar of voters. And those are the four items on our consent calendar. Does anyone object to those items on the consent calendar? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare? Actually, we don't need to. If no one objects, we can adopt that by unanimous consent. But I don't know if anyone online has objected. I don't think so. Okay. Hearing none, those items have been adopted upon unanimous consent. Oh, actually, no. What am I doing? We have to take a record vote on that. That's ridiculous. Sorry, sorry. It's been so long since I've been up here. Okay. The two-minute voting window. Craig, can you prepare the two-minute voting window? Is it open? Okay. It should be open. If you can press your clicker, you'll have two minutes. If you're in favor of the consent calendar items, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. It's a good time to check and see if your square has changed. Okay. Is everyone all set? We're about ready to close the vote. Has everyone registered a vote if they're interested in voting on this item? Okay. Hang on, we are going to, wait a minute, is there an issue back there? Okay. It's red, red and green aren't what you're looking for. You're looking for blue or gray. If you have a blue square, it means that you have cast a vote and it has registered. It's not registering yes or no with the blue, with the, with the green or the red, okay? So if you are a green, if you have a green bar, I've been, I've been informed that that means that someone who is participating online next to their name, okay? So if you're red, it means you're in the room, okay? Okay. Is everyone all set? Does everyone understand before I close the vote? I'm not hearing anything in the room, so I'm going to presume we can close the vote. Okay? Okay. The vote on the consent calendar item is 180 in favor, 5 opposed with zero abstentions. Craig, could you please display the vote? Those items have carried. That now brings us to Tom Broadhurst, who is going to be offering something for us.
Madam Moderator, fellow members, I move that we limit debate to two minutes per speaker, per item, per motion, pardon me, and with five minutes for the proponent and principal opponent on the following items.
Thank you. Is there a second? The motion has been moved in second and is now before us. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. Craig, could you please prepare the voting screen for that? Okay. So this is the Broadhurst motion to limit debate to two minutes per speaker per motion, with five minutes going to the proponent and the principal opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator. This does require a two-thirds majority to pass. We're going to open the vote window. Craig, could you please open the vote window? Is it open? Okay. You can, you may cast your vote. If you're in favor of the motion to limit debate, you would vote yes. If you're opposed, you would vote no. It does require two-thirds to pass. If your intention is to vote on the motion to limit the debate, please do so now. Might want to check your clicker to make sure it represents what you voted. Are there any issues before I close the vote, before I move to close the vote? Okay. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. The vote on the Broadhurst motion to limit debate for speakers for the balance of the evening is 160 in favor, 15 opposed with two abstentions. That motion has carried. So for the balance of the meeting, speakers will have two minutes per speaker per motion, and the principal opponent and proponent will have five minutes each. Okay? That brings us to the first of our separate items. Item number seven, is Stephen Katz here, please? Stephen Katz, Chair of the Commission on Aging. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. You can leave that up for a little bit while he's presenting. If we could just respect the speaker, please, and quiet down.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Katz. I'm Chair of the Commission on Aging. I bring the following resolution on behalf of the Director of the Commission on Aging. Resolved at the Representative Town Meeting of the Town of Greenwich, hereby amend ordinance entitled Chapter 12 Taxation Article Property Tax Exemptions, Section 12-6.1, Property Tax Relief for Seniors and Totally Disabled Homeowners, Subsection 6. Exploration to extend the expiration dates as follows. All provisions of this ordinance as amended shall cease to be effective on June 30, 2029, unless an ordinance extending this ordinance is properly submitted to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Estimant Taxation, and the Representative Town Meeting and approved prior to December 31, 2028. The item is as appeared on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Ooh, it's a race. Will it be Allison Solar or Brooks Harris to the front? Brooks Harris in pole position, Finance Committee.
Thank you. Finance Committee took this, took this item up and discussed, we were primarily focused on the fact that the proposed, the proposal was substantially similar to what was in existence. What was in existence was subject to a sunset provision to ensure that everything worked properly. Steve Katz reported to us, and it appeared to us that everything worked properly, so we were amenable to extending this, and we voted 11-0-0 in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Solar, Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening, Moderator, fellow RTM members and guests. Your Health and Human Services Committee met last Tuesday night. We had Lori Contadino, Director of the Commission on Aging, and Stephen Katz, Board Chair of the Commission on Aging, present the item to us. Just a short little thing on this. Lori reported that the program wasn't acted in the year 2000 and that the ordinance sunset says, Brooks just told us, if we don't extend it by December 31st. And this extends it for five years to June 2029. She explained that the program's critical to the residents who were helped last year and in the future. Last year, it was 464 residents, including eight permanently disabled residents. The rest were all aged 65 and older who are helped with this tax relief. The last year, the total relief totaled 786,000. The limit is 900 for the year. One committee asked about the decline in relief given out in recent years. It's a slow drop, and Mr. Katz suggested it could be changes in the housing market. And Ms. Contadino added, "Some people have moved or have passed away." She stated that every town and community has some sort of program like this, and they hope to continue to spread the word through announcements with the tax bills, through social media, and through the new senior, which will be named, the Wallace Center website coming soon. In addition, the Assessors Office also sends individual notes to those who qualified in the past. Committee members asked how the residents are vetted, and Lori detailed how this is based on income levels, the schedule of relief amounts are in the explenos, but residents must show their tax documentation to file for the tax relief with the Assessors Office. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger.
These are longtime Greenwich residents who want to age in place in their homes and in the town where they have raised their families, and have a social and support network. It is also far less expensive for them to age in their home than in a long-term care institution. Just a little bit of history will help to understand this. In the municipal, we adopted Chapter 12-6.1 of the Municipal Code in 2000, which was for seniors only, and it had a five-year sunset clause. It was inserted because the RTM did not know what the ordinance's effect would be on property tax revenues. Sunset clause has been extended every five years. Current version, as noted in the earlier speaker, will terminate the end of this, well, the program will terminate in the end of June, but it has to be extended this year or the ordinance will expire. So if we want to continue the property tax program, the property tax relief program, we must approve the amendment this year. Although this was first adopted in 2000 for seniors only, when the sunset clause was extended in 2019, the Board of Selectmen moved to add disabled persons. Change was unanimously approved by the BET, the Board of Selectmen, and the RTM. Interesting to note that in 2019, the RTM's vote was 192-0-0. The cost to the town is specified in the ordinance, and that the 22-23 budget for, the cap is set at 900,000, and that that program, that cap has not been reached for the past five years. In 2022, there were 464 taxpayers who qualified for the program and received a total of 786,546 in tax credit. Who is credible, who is eligible for the program? Presently, only two people in the town meet the disability qualification. The senior qualification's a little easier. There's a whole list of things that must be satisfied, but all must be residents at a certain age, or married, or spouse, or someone at 65 or older. The delegate from District 6 questioned why, in the case of an asset-rich, income-poor recipient of this credit, their estate was not required to reimburse the town upon their death for the credits received. The delegate from District 1 concurred but went further to say that such individuals should perhaps not be entitled to receive the credit. Ms. Fassoliotis noted that there was a deferral option in the ordinance, which requires repayment, but the committee pointed out that this was not referenced in the materials. The credit is under state law. The stated amount for the credit in 2022 was approximately 786,000. Motion was made to vote on the item and to waive the second read. I will make the motion regarding the second read at the appropriate time. There are no substantive changes in the current ordinance. The proposal only extends the sunset clause an additional five years. The item passed 12-0-0 on legal order and passed 11-0-1 on the merits. The delegate from District 1 abstained, as he would like time to look into a deferral option for people of high net worth but low income. And the motion to waive the second read passed 9-3-0. The no votes came from Districts 1, 6, and 10. The delegate from District 1 noted that we have time to follow the second read rule. The delegate from District 6 asserted that we needed the time to look into the financial implications of estate repayment, repayment of tax credits. The district then agreed with both. I'll make the motion at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. That time may come sooner than you expect. There was no one that signed up to speak on this item. So, Mr. Bergweger, turn back. Yep. You are free to offer your Legislative Rules motion.
Here I move, on behalf of the Legislative Rules Committee, that we waive the second read rule on this matter.
Okay. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Craig, could you please put the, it probably says L and R motion to suspend the rules? Yep. So if you are in favor of the Legislative Rules motion to suspend the second read rule for item number seven, which would allow us to take it up this evening as a first read, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to this and would like to see the item come back in December at our next meeting, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the voting window? this would be the time to do that. Okay. Okay. I don't hear anybody in the room who suggests that they have an issue, so we're going to, The window should be open, and you are free to cast your vote. Craig, if you could please close the vote? Okay. The vote on the Legislative Rules motion to suspend the second read requirement for item number seven, those in favor, 182, opposed eight, abstaining zero. That item has carried. Craig, could you display the vote, please? Okay. That now brings us to an opportunity to actually vote on the item as it is on the call. So Craig, if you could prepare the vote that says item number seven. Okay. If you are in favor of item number seven, which is an ordinance that extends the senior and disabled property tax relief ordinance, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to that, you would vote no. You'll have two minutes on the timer. Craig, could you please start the vote? Or open the vote? Okay. It should be open, and you are free to cast your vote. You have about 30 seconds before the window closes, so this would be the time to register your vote, if you intend to vote on this item. Okay. I don't hear anybody in the room who suggests that they have an issue, so we're going to, Craig, if you could please close the vote? Okay. The vote on the Legislative Rules motion to suspend the second read requirement for item number seven, those in favor, 182, opposed eight, abstaining zero. That item has carried. Craig, could you display the vote, please? Okay. That now brings us to an opportunity to actually vote on the item as it is on the call. So Craig, if you could prepare the vote that says item number seven. Okay. If you are in favor of item number seven, which is an ordinance that extends the senior and disabled property tax relief ordinance, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to that, you would vote no. You'll have two minutes on the timer. Craig, could you please start the vote? Or open the vote? Okay. It should be open, and you are free to cast your vote. You have about 30 seconds before the window closes, so this would be the time to register your vote, if you intend to vote on this item. Okay. I don't hear anybody suggesting that they have an issue in the room with their clicker, so Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. The vote on item number seven is 190 in favor, three opposed with one abstention. That item has carried. Okay. That brings us to our final item for the evening, item eight. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you please show the vote? Okay. Item number eight. Is there a representative from Quiet Yards who's going to be introducing this item for us? Sophie Kovin, representing Quiet Yards of Greenwich.
Good evening. In 1634, the ship Arabella came to
No, 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 no. Ms. Kovin, all you're doing is reading the, you're not giving your report now, you're just introducing the resolution. So it says, "Resolve that the chapter..."
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't...
Do you have a copy of your call?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Excuse me. "Resolve that Chapter 6B noise of the Greenwich Code of Ordinances be amended to restrict use of gas-powered leaf blowers from May 1st to September 30th in order to promote the healthy enjoyment of homes and yards by Greenwich residents." Thank you.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Beginning with Peter Berg, Allison Solar? Who's going? Come on. Peter Berg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Ms. Moderator, fellow members. So the Land Use Committee met last Monday night. All districts were represented. We, we heard first from Svetlana Wasserman, from the Quiet Yards Organization, and she presented detailed information about the efforts to abate the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers. She said, "Town residents have been trying for years to get common sense measures passed to no avail." The Quiet Yards Organization conducted a survey of residents. They get, they had about 700 responses, and about 90% said they wanted restrictions on the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in their neighborhoods, with a majority wanting a full ban. 200-plus municipalities in the United States and 24 neighboring towns have adopted the same or tighter restrictions to those that are being proposed here. The proposal allows gasoline leaf blowers during the times of the year when landscapers need them the most to clear away fallen foliage and wet leaves. There are alternate tools that they can use during the summer moratorium that more than adequately handle the light cleanup, including zero emission electric leaf blowers. So after Ms. Wasserman, we had two local landscapers. First Eric Anderson presented his findings that, about switching to electric leaf blowers. The, his presentation followed his previous presentation to the Board of Health. He said, "It's not cost-effective for either landscapers or homeowners to switch to electric. The lower power output of electric blowers would drive the need to spend more time doing the same work, increasing the cost to homeowners. Since electric blowers are limited by their battery life, they need to purchase multiple batteries, thereby increasing costs." He believes that batteries could pose a health hazard due to the reports of combustion of lithium batteries. Then we had local organic landscaper Jeff Cordelak, who spoke about his ability to use all electric equipment to do the same job at lower prices than his gasoline-powered competitors, refuting the idea that consumers will be made to pay higher prices if this seasonal ban is put in place. He says, "He does not follow the same procedures as the gasoline-powered teams. His, his methods allow him to transition to electric equipment. He believes he saves money over time due to not purchasing gasoline every day. The cost of charging the equipment is negligible, and he has never had a employee, a team member, say that they want to go back to gasoline-powered equipment, nor has he had any complaints from customers about the neatness of his work." The Land Use Committee voted on this item nine in favor, three opposed, that is, to approve it. The no votes came from Districts 2, 4, and 6. The District 2 delegates said, "It's hypocritical to adopt regulations that will require more workers when there's not enough housing for workers, that it's unfair to apply regulations 200-plus municipalities in the United States and 24 neighboring towns have adopted the same or tighter restrictions to those that are being proposed here. The proposal allows gasoline leaf blowers during the times of the year when landscapers need them the most to clear away fallen foliage and wet leaves. There are alternate tools that they can use during the summer moratorium that more than adequately handle the light cleanup, including zero emission electric leaf blowers. So after Ms. Wasserman, we had two local landscapers. First Eric Anderson presented his findings about switching to electric leaf blowers. His presentation followed his previous presentation to the Board of Health. He said it's not cost-effective for either landscapers or homeowners to switch to electric. The lower power output of electric blowers would drive the need to spend more time doing the same work, increasing the cost to homeowners. Since electric blowers are limited by their battery life, they need to purchase multiple batteries, thereby increasing costs. He believes that batteries could pose a health hazard due to the reports of combustion of lithium batteries. Then we had local organic landscaper Jeff Cordelak, who spoke about his ability to use all electric equipment to do the same job at lower prices than his gasoline-powered competitors, refuting the idea that consumers will be made to pay higher prices if this seasonal ban is put in place. He says he does not follow the same procedures as the gasoline-powered teams. His methods allow him to transition to electric equipment. He believes he saves money over time due to not purchasing gasoline every day. The cost of charging the equipment is negligible, and he has never had an employee, a team member, say that they want to go back to gasoline-powered equipment, nor has he had any complaints from customers about the neatness of his work. The land use committee voted on this item nine in favor, three opposed, that is, to approve it. The no votes came from districts two, four, and six. The district two delegates said it's hypocritical to adopt regulations that will require more workers when there's not enough housing for workers, that it's unfair to apply regulations to residential and not to commercial, and that there is too much government regulation that adds costs to residents. District four agreed that regulations need to treat commercial properties the same as residential. District six does not want to increase costs to residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Solar, chairwoman of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Hello again. We had three people present to the committee to help us understand this item. Elizabeth Dempsey of Quiet Yards Greenwich, Carolyn Basely, the Director of Health, and Eric Anderson, as Peter just mentioned, too. So Elizabeth Dempsey of Quiet Yards Greenwich presented the item and explained that they have condensed and shortened the ordinance, so it's a simple five-month ban on gas-powered leaf blowers from May 1st to September 30th, and only on residential property. They have amended the original Board of Health noise ordinance, as we all know, and explained... So Quiet Yards Greenwich has come to Health and Human Services in a previous meeting, so we already knew a bit about their stance on the health issues with both noise and pollution. And I don't want to repeat anything Peter just said. She did say that landscapers can expect a savings within five years of purchasing the electric versions, and that they plan to have an education campaign to help landscapers learn about the new technology. And with regard to enforcement, that Chief Heavey has agreed to enforce the ordinance if it passes. She stated that the amendments to the ordinance include three items. The sentence in the call, which you heard from Sophie Koven banning them, adding a definition of electric-powered leaf blowers, and that people should call the non-emergency number for enforcement. One committee member brought up the issue that the Chair of ALNR, Kip Bergweger, wrote a memo saying the ordinance was not in legal order. I'm assuming Kip will be giving his report, and you'll find out how they voted on the legal order. One committee member said they now have a landscaper who uses only electric leaf blowers, and that's a significant quality of life benefit. Others added that noise from the gas-powered leaf blowers, especially in dense neighborhoods, is a great nuisance. Other members questioned why we have this ban only on residential property and not town and commercial property as well. And Ms. Dempsey said this was a simple compromise to try and give people some relief. Carolyn Basely, that are Director of Health, was invited to help explain the reasons the Board of Health rejected this ordinance in their June meeting. Ms. Basely gave a history of the noise ordinance, that the Board of Health enacted this in 1984. She showed the committee three places that Quiet Yards had amended the ordinance, and they're just what I had mentioned. They're not listed in exactly in the call, but they're in the Explanos Attachment 1 for item eight. It was suggested the original document sent to the town clerk was color-coded, and that because we don't do color-coded, it was difficult to see the changes. But they're just what I mentioned. Ms. Basely shared that she read every report regarding health issues that Quiet Yard Greenwich provided, and noted that they picked certain elements for their slides that didn't show the full picture. She stated that their premise was that gas-powered leaf blowers cause an immediate health hazard, and if that was the case, then the Board of Health would have to have a full ban, not just five months, and also ban any landscaping or construction equipment that was of similar noise, et cetera. She further explained that all other towns have addressed gas-powered leaf blowers through a quality-of-life ordinance, not through a Board of Health ordinance. She said that approximately 30 landscapers attended the Board of Health meeting, and a number spoke out against the ban because the electric-powered leaf blowers are made more for residential use, not commercial use. She shared that the current noise ordinance, which currently states that you can only have one gas-powered leaf blower at a time and within certain hours, has not been enforced. So the Board of Health voted to establish a licensing program for landscapers to help with accountability and education of the ordinance, the current one. Mr. Eric Anderson of Anderson Landscape Contractors also came and spoke to our committee and gave a statement. He's an eighth-generation resident, has been in the business for 40 years, and basically said the same thing that he told Peter's committee. There's just not enough power at CFMs cubic feet per minute. The gas-powered leaf blowers are just not much stronger. And he said the cost is high because of the batteries and the chargers needed. He did agree that the registration and licensing program from the Board of Health is a good idea, and he did share that he uses electric equipment when his customers request it, but that it should be up to the property owner, not the town, to dictate what you do on your property. A number of... We spent almost two hours on this item. So a number of committee members shared their stance that gas-powered leaf blowers are a health hazard, that Greenwich should be a leader in this area to ban them partially at least, and that this is a good step in the right direction. One member shared that frustration that this will hurt local and small businesses, and that there wasn't a provision to subsidize the landscapers to help them transition to electric. We spent a little time discussing how the ordinance reads in the call versus the full ordinance detailed in the Explanos Attachment 1 for item eight. And one member made a motion to vote on the Explanos Attachment 1, the full version of the item, not the call version, and that motion passed 12-0-0. Then the committee voted on that, item eight, as it is in the Explanos Attachment 1. And our vote was 8-3-1, with districts four, nine, and 10 voting no, and District 12 abstaining. Those who voted no say this hurts the landscapers. One was not comfortable with the information presented by Quiet Yards of Greenwich, and one member wanted to wait for a ruling on if it's in legal order. And the abstention also wanted to hear from the legal department.
Thank you. Thank you. Kip Bergweger, chairman of our Legislative Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. At our meeting on Monday, our guest speakers assisting the committee were from the Quiet Yards Greenwich representatives, Jane Brash and Elizabeth Dempsey, co-chairs, Sophie Koven of the organization, and we also had Caroline Basely, the Town Director of Health, Jeff Cordelak, founder of Organic Ways and Means, and Deb Travers, Town Director and Family Health, as well as Amina Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney. Prior to the committee meeting, I was notified that there may be a question of whether the proposed ordinance is in legal order. The ordinance will amend the noise ordinance that was enacted and has been amended over the years by the Town Board of Health. The proposed ordinance does not go through the Board of Health. It has the RTM amending the noise ordinance. The issue is whether the RTM has the authority to amend an ordinance that had been enacted by the Board of Health. Prior to the meeting, both myself and Ms. Sophie Koven distributed memoranda addressing the issue. There are reasonable arguments on either side of the question. Legislative Rules devoted at least half of its meeting discussing the issue of legal order. During the discussion, a copy of the Special Acts of 1915, which had created the Board of Health and gave it certain powers to provide for the town's health, was presented to ALNR, but there was no time available to review the document. We could go into a detailed description of the discussion on legal order, but that will not be of value at this time point in the evening. You can find a description in Legislative Rules Committee's report. I will go over the discussion of the merits that we dealt with, and then return to one important role that the question of legal order could play. The Greenwich Quiet Yards co-chairs Elizabeth Dempsey and Jane Brash presented their case succinctly. Quiet Yards has been working with the Board of Health for months and has requested that the Board amend the noise ordinance. Ms. Dempsey said they have tried to follow all the rules, liaising with all constituents, but find themselves cut off at each time. Ms. Brash presented the proposal with supporting information: pollutants, noise level, low frequency versus high frequency, et cetera. Eventually, the Board of Health voted to reject their proposal. The delegate from District 10 asked if this was a noise problem or a pollution problem, to which the answer was both. He wanted to know where do we stop in regulating people's lives and the machinery they can use on their property? Ms. Koven responded that the ordinance is from the property line. Lawn mowers are not as loud and not covered by the noise ordinance. She noted that there are no emission controls for two-stroke engines. Quiet Yards went with the noise ordinance, as it is not in conflict with the existing ordinance. The delegate from District 10 stated that it was beyond the town's power to regulate what residents can do in their backyards. The delegate from District 1 asked about alternative equipment usage in the absence of gas-powered leaf blowers, believing that we might find the replacements are worse than what we have now, and deemed harmful that a quieter one will be developed. Ms. Koven said this is unlikely, as they are being phased out, pointing out that both New Jersey and California have banned the sale of gas-fueled equipment. Ms. Dempsey said the studies on the negative effects of two-stroke engines are indisputable. Ms. Dempsey addressed District 10's concerns about the town telling the residents what they can do, noting that there is a point at which a person's actions can affect others negatively where there is a regulation required, e.g., smoking. Deb Travers, Director and Family Health in the town, spoke to the negative financial impact landscapers believe a curb on the usage of gas-powered leaf blowers will have, and confirmed that the Board of Health has formed a subcommittee in response to the Quiet Yards' request, and the subcommittee is still working on the issue. Ms. Dempsey restated that the proposal was turned down at the June meeting, and that no timeframe has been given for any resolution of the subcommittee's work. It was noted that Fairfield County was behind its neighbors in instituting curbs on gas-powered leaf blowers. District 11's delegate, who had previously been Deputy Mayor in North Castle, New York, noted that Westchester County had seen regulation in a number of towns, specifically Chapico, which had banned the leaf blowers outright. District 5's alternate delegate asked Jeff Cordelak, who runs the Organic All-Electric Landscaping Company, if a machine could cut and mulch. He said it did, and provided examples of how beneficial such an alternative is. Now, I said I would not go through the details on the legal order discussion, except that one particular caution came up, which I think needs to be addressed. Ms. Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney, was concerned that if someone brought a proceeding challenging the validity of this amendment of the noise ordinance, a court could hold that the amendment was not valid. She noted that the declaration of policy in the ordinance in 1984 includes a preface stating that regulation of noise is a public health issue supported by scientific data. In order to strengthen arguments supporting the validity of the Quiet Yards amendment, she recommended that the RTM should incorporate a similar preference into its amended ordinance and to make such other changes as she would recommend in order to discourage further challenges. The representatives from Quiet Yards are very open to providing such support. The amendment is now on its first read, and the second read will be in December, so there is adequate time to make the changes recommended by the Assistant Town Attorney and strengthen the arguments favoring legal order. Although the Chair... That's I. It indicated that I wasn't inclined to vote on legal order at this time. The delegate from District 1 moved to vote on legal order, and that motion was seconded. Item eight passed on legal order, 9-2-1, with Districts 7 and 10 voting no, and I abstain. District 7 voted no because I had said I was not comfortable voting on legal order at this meeting. I abstain because I was not prepared to express an opinion on this item until I could review and study the Special Acts of 1915 and other new information that had been presented. District 10 voted no, as the delegate was clear that he did not believe the RTM should be able to restrict the behaviors of residents. On the merits, the item passed 6-3-3, with Districts 7, 10, and 11 voting no, and Districts 1, 3, and 8 abstaining. District 7 voted no, as she didn't believe gas leaf blowers are any louder than electric ones. Districts 10 and 11 believe they should have the right to use gas-powered equipment on their own property. That's it.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to our speaker sheet. Sophie Koven will be representing Quiet Yards Greenwich, and she'll be recognized as the proponent. You'll have up to five minutes to be followed by our opponent, Roberto Fernandez, who's a landscaper.
Thank you. In 1634, the ship Arabella came to anchor in Boston Harbor and thus established the Massachusetts Bay Colony. On board the Arabella was Sir Edward Cook's Reports, a collection of case law from England that served as the legal foundation of this new country we call the United States. One of the key cases in Cook's Reports is William Aldridge's case from 1611. Aldridge's neighbor built a pigsty in his yard, and the sound and the stench of the pigery made it impossible for Aldridge to enjoy his property. He sued the neighbor. The court upheld the complaint, and thereafter permanently enshrined that the right to private property includes the right to enjoy property without interference. This foundational right was embraced by the settlers who came to the United States and is part of our nation's history and heritage. In the town of Greenwich, this right is protected by dozens of health and zoning ordinances, including the noise ordinance that specifies that noise crossing a property line is limited to 55 decibels. Hand-held gas-powered leaf blowers were invented in the early 1980s. Noise from gas blowers is often 100 decibels or more at the source. A blower being used on one property sends extremely loud noise across neighboring properties. The first organized effort to restrict their use in Greenwich came in 1992, when Dick Roberts organized Project Quiet Yards. This group lobbied the town for change, explaining that the noise prevented residents from working at home or relaxing in their yards. Instead of restricting the use, the Board of Health granted an exemption for gas-powered blowers, although they clearly violate the town's noise ordinance. This exemption allows for use Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and 9:00 to 3:00, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. Gas-powered leaf blowers can be used seven days a week, 12 months a year. During the next 20 years, the use of blowers increased. In 2012, another group, COM, organized to advocate for change, residents again spoke about being unable to work and relax in their own homes and yards. Again, the Board of Health declined to intervene, and after a three-hour meeting, the RTM voted down proposed summer restrictions by a mere 17 votes. Quiet Yards has now been working for two years, again, on this issue. We have met with town officials, town staff, residents, landscapers. We've compiled health information and information on landscaper economics. The drone of leaf blowers is constant. 89% of surveyed residents support greater restrictions. Restrictions are realistic, as there's a wide array of electric leaf blowers available that could easily substitute gas blowers. Manufacturers of leaf blowers aren't focusing on electric leaf blowers, as more than 200 municipalities restrict their use. In California and New Jersey will soon ban the sale of gas blowers. The proposal before you tonight will restrict the use of gas blowers in the warm months of the year when residents are most likely to be outside or have windows open. The proposed restrictions follow a pragmatic philosophy. We cannot eliminate all noise or all pollution in our town, but we do have an opportunity to meaningfully limit close-range exposure to the exceptionally loud noise and pollution of leaf blowers. The Board of Health has presented this issue as binary. Either gas leaf blowers are in immediate danger and need to be banned completely, or no change is warranted. This all-or-nothing approach runs contrary to the type of advice normally provided by medical professionals. For example, doctors don't say, "If you can't exercise every day for 60 minutes, don't bother to exercise at all." Incremental change adds up over time. Restrictions to gas blowers will lead to better enjoyment of property and better health. This compromise has been developed over years. It may not be perfect, and certainly there will be detractors, but it is a step towards restoring quiet. Residents have been asking for relief for three decades, and the delays have real impacts. Dick Roberts, the original proponent for restrictions, died in 2016. His dream of enjoying quiet summers in Greenwich was never realized. The RTM has the opportunity to substantially restore residents' rights to enjoy their property free from the interference of gas-powered leaf blowers. Instituting this change through the RTM allows for this issue to be addressed through the democratic process. Existing noise exemption for gas-powered leaf blowers is a glaring, perhaps we could say, a roaring, ear-splitting... say, a roaring, ear-splitting exception. Let Greenwich residents' voices be heard and not drowned out by the noise of gas-powered leaf blowers. Please vote to restore peace and quiet to our homes and our yards.
Thank you. Roberto Fernandez, who will be recognized as the opponent, principal opponent, and he's a landscaper with a landscaping business.
Good evening. I've been living in this town for almost 40 years. I got into this industry because of my passion for landscape plants, trees, flowers. Landscaping is my passion, same as other landscapers in this room. We provide a service to this community and homeowners. We, the landscapers here tonight, we're all professionals, and we know the industry very well. Several of us made an investments, like myself, these past two years on e-blowers to test them, use them in our properties, put them to the max, and they don't perform as well as gas blowers. I got three myself, and beside the initial cost and the lack of power, they're heavier than gas blowers and less powerful. Batteries don't last long, and we need to keep them charging constantly, and as you know, because we all have cell phones, after a while, the life of these batteries keep decaying, and not to mention how dangerous the lithium batteries are and the cost of them, so we have to keep replacing. Also having a special charging station for all these batteries, we all need to buy and keep them on a climate room with either heat or cool. Most of us operate from a yard, not building, and we don't have a structure to be able to charge all this equipment. We all invested in gas power equipment throughout the years in business, and now we need to invest more money for the summer months. Let's not forget, this gas equipment has been tested and approved by the DEP and other OSHA standards. Why not to try to enforce the existing rules that the Board of Health has placed for the summer months? One blower per property from Memorial Day weekend till the end of September. If you enforce these existing rules, I am sure you will see a big difference in noise reduction in this town. Remember, the noise of this town doesn't come only from blowers, and I don't need to tell you that. I'm sure you've done your homework. What about the homeowner that does his own yard, after coming from a long day of work in the evening on the weekend where he likes to do the yard work? And now he's going to be forced to invest more money for equipment for the summer months? There are people here that enjoy working in their yard, and they take pride over their home, and now will be restricted to go and buy another equipment. I don't think this is fair to them and also our industry. I am sure you, members of the RTM that live in Greenwich, have a yard, and some of you enjoy working on your yard, and others hiring a professional landscaper. Now, you will have to buy another equipment or pay more money for the service that you're getting now. How about the clientele that we service in this town? Some of them, very high-end clients, where they pay very expensive property taxes and invest in their landscaping, their properties to make it beautiful. Now, they will need to increase our services and fees because we need to make a larger investment, not mention will take longer to do the work. I totally respect your thoughts to this group. If you desire to go green, organic lawn care, electric cars, healthy organic food, organic spraying for ticks, mosquitoes, your lawns and trees, this means that we also have to enforce to tree companies, after doing a tree takedown or spraying mosquitoes, they now they need to buy more equipment for the summer months. Going solar, I respect that, but it's your choice. Your choice that you, the way of life, I am okay with that. I respect you, but don't force homeowners and professional landscapers and tree companies to go and think like you and force to think like you. What Quiet Yards is proposing, I think, right now is not the time. The technology for the commercial sector is not there, yet maybe for small cities with small yards, but not for our northeast area. The Board of Health is working on these existing rules and noise ordinance, same as registration for all business, in educating landscapers and homeowners. Both the homeowners in this town, they don't know the existing ordinance of noise. Given some time to work on this, I promise you will see a big difference given the time. We feel what we use in our industry is approved by state agencies. In our choice is our right to make a living. We are not breaking the law. By passing these new noise rules and not enforcing these rules to the town of Greenwich, commercial properties, country clubs, and us having to invest in new equipment and following the new noise ordinance rules, I feel the right of freedoms.
Thank you. So let me give you the landscape of what your sign-up sheet looks like. You have 34 people signed up. Thirty-two remaining are speaking in favor of the noise ordinance and two are opposed. So you are going to hear, you know, pro-con for about the next four people, and then it's going to be straight in favor of. So our next speaker is Elizabeth Dempsey. All remaining speakers will have two minutes. You'll get the hook, or we will throw Halloween candy at you if you go over the time limit. So Elizabeth Dempsey of Quiet Yards of Greenwich.
Hi, everybody. I'm Elizabeth Dempsey with Quiet Yards, and I operate my own electric backpack blower, so I have a little experience about it on the residential side. The proposal before you tonight is about Greenwich residents and quality of life. It is clear that the use and noise from gas blowers in Greenwich has doubled since previous attempts at lifting the exemption on gas blowers. Gas models today routinely exceed 100 ear-splitting decibels, and their low-frequency noise travels long distance over property lines and penetrates our homes, windows, and walls. This happens whether a gas blower is used in our yard or several houses down the road. It is also clear from listening to each of the districts last night, or last week in our meetings and the ensuing discussions that residents and RTM members alike don't like the noise from gas blowers. No one does. So I would submit to you the top three reasons, in my opinion, why you should support this measure. Number one, current experience and precedence show that our proposal works. You don't have to read our research. You don't have to worry if this proposal will be a tax on landscapers. We offer real experiences, current examples in Greenwich that show our proposal can and is working now today. You will hear about 12 acres, a 12-acre property in District 1 and 13-acre property in District 10, both heavily treed. The landscaping is as manicured and blown as any in Greenwich, and the sound is reduced by 50% in switching to electric models. Beyond local experience, look for precedent at the hundreds of towns across the U.S., including 24 in the northeast that are right next door, including Bedford and Westport. These are towns where many of our own Greenwich landscapers are already successfully operating now with electric blowers for summer.
Thank you. Ferdinando Shiro, to be followed by Janet Stone McWiggin.
Thank you, Metamoderator, members of the RTM. I want to throw around this word that is pretty used nowadays, equitable. As defined in the dictionary, it's characterized by equality of fairness, just, and right. I feel that this proposal is anything but equitable. Why? I think of small business owners. I think of the landscapers that this will impact. They say that it won't impact, but if you think about buying batteries, or, you know, they say buy used equipment, but we all know what used means, pre-owned, already worn. So how long will that pre-used equipment last? I also think of the students that I teach in my own job. Many of them have come to this country for work and for a better life. Many of them work as landscapers because that is the job available to them. I think about how they will feel if they now have to use all different equipment. You know, what is the cost to them? What is the cost to them, their family? And if they're not able to do their work in a timely manner, what happens to their business? And with that, you know, I would, I urge you to vote no for this and think about how, think about its equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Stone McWiggin, to be followed by Carolyn Basely.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Janet Stone McWiggin, and I stand before you tonight wearing three hats, that of a Greenwich select person, that of the co-chair of the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, and last but not least, that of a Greenwich resident. Wearing my first hat, I'd like to note that I get a lot of complaints from residents about noise from leaf blowers, right up there, along with parking and traffic. It is not an overstatement that Quiet Yards Greenwich has taken on a problem that needs to be addressed. So thank you, Quiet Yards Greenwich. The Sustainability Committee endorses the mission of Quiet Yards Greenwich. The committee is an impressive and inclusive network of sustainability-minded residents and local organizations. As a town committee, it is nonpartisan. It does not confer its endorsement lightly. Its endorsement is therefore noteworthy. Finally, I'd like to relate my experience as a homeowner. The debate about leaf blowers made me reconsider my lawn care, and I switched landscapers to one who uses only electric equipment. Imagine my surprise shortly after switching, to leave my house and find that the landscaping crew was tending my lawn. I hadn't heard them. Better yet, imagine my happy surprise when I paid my first bill and found out that my costs stayed the same. I do think it is only fair that in asking for changes that would benefit everyone, it should be done by an ordinance. Thank you, Quiet Yards Greenwich, for all the thought and research that has gone into this. I ask you all to please vote in favor.
Caroline Basely, our Director of the Department of Health. Okay, could you please introduce yourself? You want to introduce yourself at the podium, not from the audience, please.
I'm Dr. Sarah Gamble. I am the Vice Chairman of the Board of Health for the town of Greenwich, and I am the Chairman of the Board Subcommittee on this noise ordinance. I apologize, this is not my thing. I usually do a one-to-one in an exam room with a patient, but my whole point in being here is to let you know that this is still an open issue on the Board's agenda. My committee has not tabled anything. We're still actively doing research on it. This has taken 11 months for us to slog through, and we're not done. I take my job very seriously. If they're bringing this as a noise, as a health hazard, then it is our job as the Board, our job, to research that and come to a good conclusion. What we propose is, we're still working on this. Every meeting, we mention it. My Subcommittee is still in active contact with each other. This is not a closed issue for the Board. That's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So from this point on, you have heard the speakers who would be opposed to this ordinance. From this point on, you're only going to hear folks who are in favor of it. We're going to start with Jeff Cordelak, to be followed by Nelson Munoz. And as always, if you've heard your remarks and you feel that you want to pass, you are welcome to do so. So Jeff Cordelak, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you very much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to be a landscaper in Greenwich. I have five years of experience working on large estates and small properties the like with 100% electric machines. That's all blowers, mowers, trimmers. For estates, I have several 20-plus acre, 20-acre properties and bigger. I work on those.
Hang on for a second.
Throughout the year.
Wait a minute, hang on.
And then.
Stop the clock. Could you please stop the clock? And whoever's against the light switch, if you could turn it back on. Somebody's sitting by the door. If you could turn that back on, maybe start by opening the door. Okay, good. Great. Okay, wait, you're gonna, you're getting your time back.
Can I get two minutes, please?
You're gonna get your time back, just, okay. You may start again. We're not giving, we stop the clock when that happens, so you're good with 1:30.
Very generous of you. I do full service on large estates, and it works. We use electric leaf blowers all year long with leaves. In this proposal, we're not asking for that. We're providing a very low bar, asking you to ban blowers during the summer, as you heard earlier. This is not a problem for a company, whether it's small or large, to convert, because I've done it for five years. I can tell from experience. In fact, for a small crew, it will work even better. You're worried about the smaller companies, one truck, or let's call it a truck and two guys? Well, they're spending at least $300 a month on gas on a blower, only the blower. So every month, they could be banking 300 bucks to provide them, to provide them blowers that will work for their truck for the summer months. It will not cost more than they'll save in only the summer months of five. I can point them to the right blowers. I can also give them techniques, because I know from experience that this is working great. My customers love it. And so I can tell you that the cost arguments are out the window because they pay back with the gas alone, $300 a month per vehicle, and that's considering gas at this price and two blowers in that vehicle.
Thank you. Nelson Munoz?
Yes. What is your point of order? A point of order suggests that we are in violation of a rule right now. What is the rule we are violating at the moment? So that's not a point of order? Okay. Does someone have a point of information? Yes. What is your point of information, sir? Okay. So moving the previous question is a motion to immediately cut off debate, and it would effectively adjourn the meeting unless somebody's going to make a motion to take, you know, suspend the second read. I would probably not entertain that at this time because we do have 32 people who have signed up to speak, and I think in deference to them, we should allow them some courtesy. However, if somebody wanted to make a motion that, rather than move the question, perhaps limited the total amount of time we then spent on this item to say 30 minutes, or 45 minutes, or 60 minutes, we could see how many people we could get in in that time, and that would be something I would entertain. Is anyone interested in that motion? Okay. Okay. So this would be a motion to limit debate for the, I'm sorry? Stop, stop, okay? So Ms. Gladstone, it's not helpful if you're just going to provide sort of that loose commentary. So 30, 30 minutes, is there a second to that? Okay. So a motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and does require a two-thirds to pass. So Craig, could you please, we don't have a slide for this. 30 minutes for item 8. It does require two-thirds to pass. Let's see if we can get it up there. Okay. Okay. So it should say item 8, but you understand, okay? So this would be, who offered that motion? Henry Orpheus? Who offered that motion? Luke Shimshaw? Henry Orpheus, okay. So this is the Orpheus motion to limit debate to item 8 remainder for 30 minutes, okay? As I explained to you, there are about 34 people. If you had 30 minutes, you could probably get through half of them, assuming some of them may or may not pass. You could even get through more, okay? So does everyone understand what we're voting on? 30 minutes for 8. Okay. Craig, could you please open the window? If you are in favor, if you are in favor of limiting the debate to 30 minutes for item 8, you would vote yes. Item 8, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. We'll wait to see what happens, and it does require 2/3 majority to pass. So, you have about 30 seconds to cast your vote. If you haven't already, you'll want to do that. Okay, has everyone cast their vote? I don't hear anybody saying that they're having an issue. So, Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. On the Orpheus motion to limit debate to 30 minutes for the remainder of Item 8, the debate on Item 8 for 30 minutes, those in favor, 153, opposed 32, abstaining to that motion has carried. So, it's 9:33, so in theory, we should wrap up by about 10:03 with the debate. Mr. Munoz, oh, I'm sorry. Craig, can you please show that vote? We'll, we'll show it up there for you. Mr. Munoz, you have the floor with two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm a landscaper for 24 years so far. Twenty of those years, I was full gasoline landscaper. Before, what, if we've been able to work since four years ago, I decided to change to electric. I'm one of those landscapers that, without saying anything to my customers, I just changed my company to electric without increasing any price. I just went and changed it and started doing it. It's not been a problem for me to work, especially on the proposed, to work from May 1st to September 30th. It's really not necessary to use blowers. You can effectively do your job with no problem. We've been working four years on this, and we don't need the blowers technically in that area. The gas is nothing powerful. You just need a small blower to blow the patio and the driveway and just continue with your job. It's all that's kind of helping me to reduce the expenses on gasoline. I can tell with the, with what I spend in gasoline is what's helping me to pay all the, all the machines that I have right now. Currently, I have four crews running in Greenwich, and we go anything from corporations, condominiums, and houses. As a landscaper, as a person who worked for 20 years, the change, my guys are happy now. I'm happy with the, with the results. I'm looking for new, it's new technology. I can tell five, six years ago wasn't that technology there, but this year and the year forward is a huge improvement on electricity, power equipment. I was in Kentucky last week, looking at the new equipment, and every company is coming out with it. So, it's not going to be a problem. We can do the job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Karen DeWolff to be followed by Jamie Banks, to be followed by Dan Delventhal. Everybody just wants to line up, we'll move faster that way.
Hi, I'm Karen DeWolff with Quiet Yards. The letter I'm going to read to you was sent to me by a supporter, and it sums up what Quiet Yards Greenwich believes to be residents' concerns. We are, to RTM members, we are writing to indicate our frustration with the impact of the significant over-usage of gas-powered leaf blowers in Greenwich. The noise levels now regularly interfere with both our concentration and ability to enjoy spending time in our home and our yard. I walk on a daily basis and am regularly subjected to extreme levels of noise, dust, and fumes from landscaping crews. There is no longer any excuse for not adopting summer restrictions now that electric alternatives are readily available, can do the job, and are cost-efficient. On a positive note, I would like to say that my husband and I switched to all-electric equipment over a year ago. We are paying the same amount as before and are very happy to have made the switch. The landscaping company is in and out quickly, and we barely ever even hear them. The owner's business is growing and has been profitable, having made the transition. Personally, I think the happiest are the workers who tell me that they could never go back to using gas leaf blowers again.
Thank you. Jamie Banks to be followed by Dan Delventhal, who I believe is online, but if Jamie Banks is here, is there Jamie Banks in the room? Okay. Jenny, I understand she's online. Ms. Banks, if you are online, could you please raise your hand to be recognized? Anything? No, apparently, we don't have her online. Dan Delventhal, who is online, to be followed by Brandon Zanders. Mr. Delventhal, you're, you can speak if you're ready.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes, please.
Beautiful, thank you. I'm Dan Delventhal with Mo Green. We're Clean and Serene, no gasoline lawn care. And we do zero emission lawn service, all-electric, no gas leaf blowers, 200 customers, 60 acres weekly. We've been at it for 18 years, always zero emission, no gas equipment. And our, we've enjoyed a 30% average compound annual growth rate in revenue for 10 years. So, gas leaf blowers are bad for workers, customers, they're public nuisance, and we did a two-hour YouTube video, so there's a lot of information out there. We, we did it with Sustainable Montclair, they just passed a ban, a total ban, like Chappaqua and Larchmont, but there's a lot of good information there. It included Mount Sinai doctor and professor talking about the health impacts, the risks. And, and so, that's, that's a good thing. I've helped 20 towns, I've testified for 20 towns in the region, everyone seeking relief, and I hate them myself. So, gas lawn gear is 10% of our air pollution, and greenhouse gases and gas leaf blowers are the worst offenders. It costs four times as much to own and operate a gas leaf blower as electric. So, you make a 25% return on investment. I've done financial modeling for the tech world, and, and this is an easy one. So, the smart money's on electric. Greenwich gas lawn care air pollution is equal to 20,000 cars on the road annually, like 2 billion auto miles, 9,000 trips around the world. Think about that, what's it take? And we've never had a lithium battery fire. So, I hope you choose to protect citizens and workers from GLBs. Pass it, please.
Brandon Zanders? Brandon Zanders from ICOMO. Is he here? Okay. Monica Prichoda to be followed by Ernst Schirmer. Hang on, who's raised? Okay. Ms. Prichoda, you may go.
Good evening. I am Monica Prichoda. I am a homeowner in District 12 in the North Myana section of Riverside. I've lived in District 9, Glenville at West Lion Farm, and I was a 30-year homeowner in District 6, Old Greenwich. What do these three crosstown districts have in common? I'll tell you: gas-powered leaf blowers, noise, and fumes. Has this ever happened to you? I sit down to write, read, rest, make a phone call, go to my yard, go for a walk, or a run, or a bike ride, to enjoy a beautiful day, to hear the birds, or to talk to my neighbor, and then the year-round roar, roar, roar of gas-powered mowers and leaf blowers begins. I am ready to go, I'm already inside, or I go inside to escape it. I close my windows on this most beautiful day, but the roar, roar, roar is inescapable. Even the storm windows do not protect me from this truly grating-on-the-nerves-and-psychi sound. It is all day long, as these machines move from yard to yard, all, all day long, every day of the year. Please, RTM members, I beg you and I urge you to do your constituents, the residents of Greenwich, a major service and pass this minimal noise ordinance boundary to enhance the quality of life in our very own homes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I just want to confirm, did Brandon Zanders ever appear online, Jenny, or no? Okay, he's left. Okay, Ernst Schirmer.
Thank you so much. We really need to look into the future. We're done with 1984 stuff, and we should really take a decision from here on going forward. So, let's please hear from our youth. These are high school students.
Thank you, members of the RTM, for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Charlie Clark, and I'm a member of the Greenwich Country Day School Earthrise Group. Over the past few summers, I've noticed more and more noise from leaf blowers when I'm outside, walking my dogs, or simply trying to enjoy the ambient air. Gasoline-powered leaf blowers generate noise and pollute our air. While I understand that a transition to greener options is not easy to implement, it is still important to take steps towards creating a more sustainable town. It is critical that this town invests in the future of making Greenwich green. As a teenager in Greenwich, I loved spending time outside in the summer. My friends and I rely on our environment. For example, we swim, play lawn games, attend preseason sports practice, ride bikes, and simply hang out. I believe we all have the right to clean air and a comfortable outdoor environment. Two years ago, my family started using electrical leaf blowers to reduce our carbon footprint and create a more peaceful neighborhood environment. While this was a seemingly small change, if those here tonight vote for a switch to electric leaf blowers, Greenwich will be a healthier town for everyone, thus positively impacting quality of life for all its residents, especially our youth. Thank you.
Jason Medhurst. Mr. Clark, it looked like you had signed up again, but I'm assuming that since you've already spoken, you're done, because we don't recognize people twice. Okay. So, Jason Medhurst to be followed by Svetlana Wasserman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Medhurst. I'm a member from District 1, and I've got two points to make tonight. The first is, six years ago, when I first ran for the RTM and was collecting my signatures, I asked-
Sorry, can you start him off again, Dan, please? Just give him the, okay, good.
I asked all the people that signed up, that signed my form for petition, what one issue would they like me to know about? Over half the people said the gas leaf blowers. I hate them, they are so loud, why can't we do anything? That was six years ago. I was shocked, half the people said that to me. The other point I want to make is that beyond the RTM, I serve on the Board of Putnam Park in central Greenwich. It's a 194-unit, 13-acre co-op. Nelson, who you heard from before, is our landscaper. They are fabulous. Having only electric is such a wonderful change for everyone there, across the complex. Everyone loves it. We got that direct feedback from our annual meeting just a week ago. It has been a smashing success. We have not seen $1 increase cost due to the switch to electric. So, if he can handle 13 acres heavily treed without raising costs, I don't think this is really an issue. It is time to make this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Svetlana Wasserman to be followed by Jane Brash? Ms. Wasserman, okay. Jane Brash to be followed by Lauren Rabin? Is Ms. Rabin here? Okay.
Super quick, just wanted to address the operators of gas leaf blowers. Many of the landscapers who are opposed to our ordinance are owners of landscaping companies. They are not the ones operating the gas leaf blowers. They leave that job to the newly-landed immigrants, who often use the gas leaf blowers with no, nothing on their ears, nothing on their mouth. If 30 minutes of a gas leaf blower use is the equivalent in emissions of a pickup truck driving from New York City to LA, you can imagine the damage that it's doing to them.
Lauren Rabin, who I understand is online, to be followed by Jimena Fernandez. Ms. Rabin?
Yes, hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, thanks. And I'm really appreciating all the landscaper feedback tonight. So, Lauren Rabin, Board of Selectmen, homeowner, and full transparency, I really do enjoy raking the leaves in my yard and sweeping them out of my garage and driveway. I support the change in the ordinance. Quiet Yards Greenwich actually came to the Board of Selectmen, I think our earliest meeting was February 2022, and for all the speakers have discussed with regards to health, environment, and quality of life, I too support this ordinance change. Thanks.
Thank you. Jimena Fernandez to be followed by Julie Duchamp. Is Ms. Fernandez? No? Okay, we're going to move to Julie Duchamp. Is Julie online? Okay. Ms. Duchamp, raise your hand, and we'll unmute you. Okay, you're on.
I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you very much. Tim Shea to be followed by Myra Clockenbrink.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to pass on half my comments. I do want to relay that as a third-generation Greenwich resident who is now fortunate enough to work from home, I want to explain to those who aren't in their neighborhoods during the weekdays that four hours of leaf blower noise for me is considered a good day. It can be eight hours, it can be 12 hours. The incessant noise has affected my ability to focus on work, make calls, hear important news, and unwind after work. It travels through my walls, fills my yard with the odor of gas. I've heard it on trails hiking, I hear it on the beach, I've heard it working in my own yard, and even when I'm walking through my neighborhood with headphones on. I know how noisy and busy this town has become. Many of our residents and representatives are working on issues that are going to reduce noise. We're focused on I-95, we're focused on overdevelopment, we're focused on traffic. I think this is a great opportunity to chip away at how noisy this town has become. There's a million reasons not to do something. I hope, as my representatives, we don't wait around any longer, we don't wait for the Board of Health, we just get this passed, so we have some relief in the summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Myra Clockenbrink to be followed by Fred Camillo. Myra Clockenbrink passes. Fred Camillo is first Selectman Camillo here. Oh, there you are. That's you. Go over there. The deck and double deck sort of got lost, it's like the Astros.
Yeah, and I apologize for putting us in the dark back there before.
That was you.
That was me. I'm expecting a negative email on that one, too. And I'm here to speak in favor of a compromise. I've worked with Quiet Yards for over a couple of years now on this. And also, as somebody who- And also, as somebody who did some landscaping early in his life and has family in that business and had family in the nursery business, there is a way to do this, I think, doing a condensed, you know, summer season, giving people a break who live in condensed areas. Jaco Hominicaska, Byram OG, houses are on top of each other. People are working from home more and more, getting more and more complaints about that. And lots of, most of the landscapers I've spoken to, most of really good friends of mine, agree with that. And so I think keeping the shoulder seasons alone right now, because technology, I don't think, is there yet, and certainly maybe even looking away from the two- and four-acre zones, because it's spread out more, but certainly people, I think, their houses more on top of each other, it does lend itself to a compromise here. And I know Roberto's final words over there was, "Let's work together." I think that's how we can get this done. Lots of towns have banned this. Montgomery County in Maryland just did a full ban. They voted on it the other day, and I think it goes into effect in July of 2025. I don't want to see anything that drastic at all. We're all supporters of small business people. I was one for many years, and I think we need to support them. But this is a way, I think, to support everybody. And I know I just had spoke with some friends who are in landscaping business just here tonight, and they're open to that dialogue. So let's get it done. And this is a first read. This is something that we can do together to work for the benefit of all. So thank you very much for taking it up.
Thank you. First electman, Camillo. Robert Sherwin. There you go.
Good evening. I just wanted to add just a couple of personal comments. When the leaf blowers approach our neighborhood, I'm in District 8, my first step is to close the sliding door. My wife and I both work from home. As they get closer, I put on music. I try to get it pretty loud. As they get closer and often into two leaf blowers, I put on earbuds, and if it's really like right next door, and we've got three adjoining neighbors and three right across the street, so we get hit pretty much all day long. So I'll put music through the earbuds, and I'm still hearing it. I do want to say, I'm not originally from Greenwich, from nearby in Rye. Greenwich is one of the most beautiful places on earth. I'm just astounded at the natural beauty. And when we're out, my wife and I, or I'm out with a camera, in the various parks around town, it's great. You hear water, you see people fishing, what have you, and then you hear a leaf blower, and it just completely destroys, you know, the effect. And then finally, I just want to say that 40 years of leaf blowers, I think it's time for commerce to give way to community, because it's the community who raises the children. It's the community who fixes the houses, who pay the taxes and what have you. I think it's time for the homeowners to have a say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyndi Lilian, to be followed by Rachel Kahana.
Thank you. Town residents have a right to enjoy our property free from noise and fumes. The town's noise ordinance policy reads, "Inadequately controlled noise presents a growing danger to the public health and welfare of persons within the town." Already 40 years ago, the town recognized that noise issues continue to grow larger over time. In 1994, almost 30 years ago, the town amended the ordinance to add restrictions on leaf blowers. They were clearly a big concern then, as they are today. Those 1994 restrictions show it can be necessary to update an ordinance to account for changed circumstances and new technology. I understand these sorts of complaints are among the top complaints the first electman's office receives. Someone argued it's all or nothing, a total ban or no ban. Public health and regulation do not work that way. Cumulative improvements are welcome and sometimes necessary in the area of public health. Quiet Yards reached out to Board of Health two years ago. Board of Health voted no this June. They have given no substantive updates. This is what our town is tasked with protecting: health, danger, abatement of nuisance, excessive noise, quality of life. We should be able to enjoy our yards in the summer months. Do we really want to curtail our authority as the governing body for the town by voting here that we cannot regulate this issue? It's a situation where a piece of legislation was drafted in a very specific way, so it's unable to adapt to changing circumstances and technology without amendment. As the governing body of the town--
Time. Thank you. Rachel Kahana, to be followed by Jonathan Perlo. Ms. Kahana's online.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Kahana, and I'm the state representative for the 149th District of Connecticut, which covers parts of Greenwich and Stamford. I've been on a listening tour of the district, meeting and speaking with constituents, and it's impossible to have conversations over the sound of gas leaf blowers. Gas leaf blowers emit noise at 80 to 90 decibels. Sounds at 85 decibels or higher can lead to hearing loss, and research has shown that noise pollution has adverse effects on stress levels as well as heart health. The noise of electric gas leaf blowers is 1/10th that of gas-powered leaf blowers. In our home, we've switched to electric lawn care, and the payback on the equipment is five months, and the ongoing operating costs are 33% those of gas. Most importantly, we've saved 101 hours of noise and 2,879 pounds of CO2 since implementation in September 2022. I urge you to vote in favor of this common sense resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan Perlo, to be followed by Lizette Henry.
Madam moderator and fellow members of the RTM and guests, I come before you to ask you to vote yes on item eight when it comes before us next month. As presented in great detail in the report prepared by Quiet Yards Greenwich, the deleterious impacts on the health, the environment, and quality of life from the use of gas-powered leaf blowers are substantial and supported by a longstanding large body of evidence. An op-ed in New York Times noted that, quote, "The gasoline-powered leaf blower exists in a category of environmental hell all its own, spewing pollutants into the atmosphere at a literally breathtaking rate." Of all the emails I've received from Greenwich residents, the overwhelming majority are in favor of the prohibition. By adopting a more climate-friendly landscaping practice, we are fortunate that through this new ordinance, we can have a meaningful impact on reducing air and noise pollution and mitigating other environmental impacts of gas-powered leaf blowers with no downside consequences. It's been noted that we shouldn't regulate what goes on on our property, but that's not actually how it, how we do operate, if you just think about regulations controlling pools and building codes, things like that. While passing this resolution will reduce the worst health and environmental impacts of leaf blowers, we should be mindful that even electric leaf blowers are harmful to our health. And I'm not suggesting we don't use them, but according to one study, an hour of their use can blow up to five pounds of particulate matter into the air, which can stay suspended for up to five days. This would be a good time for property owners to ask their landscapers to not blow grass clippings, the odd leaf here and there, and dust into the air during routine lawn care, even if this ordinance passes, which I hope it does. If any of this isn't clear, my apologies. It was hard to concentrate with the din of gas-powered leaf blowers in the background as I wrote my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizette Henry. And if you can speak quickly, then Peter Berg will have the last word.
My name is Lizette Henry.
I'm in three, Ms. Jenkins.
I'm in favor of the motion, and I don't wish to say anything further.
Okay. Peter Berg, you get the last word before we close the debate.
So two points. First of all, it's important to consider that the Quiet Yards group did a survey of residents. You know, as an elected representative, I'm often in the position of having to make a decision about what's best for my constituents. But in this case, I don't have to do that, because a statistically accurate survey has been conducted, and 90% of the residents say they want restrictions on these gasoline-powered leaf blowers. So how could I ever, in good conscience, vote otherwise? Number two, I have been using battery-operated equipment on my property for many years. I do what Jeff Cordelak does. I blow the leaves from my hard surfaces onto my lawn. I blow the leaves onto my lawns, and then I mow them with my mulching mower, and they all disappear. And I don't just do that in the summer, I do that all year long. So I invite you all to come to my property, take a look at my lawn, and tell me if you think I don't have one of the best-looking lawns on my street. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So that wraps up our 30 minutes of debate for item eight. Pursuant to our second read rule, this item is due to come before us again in December. And there being no further business, this meeting stands adjourned. We'll see you in December. Thank you.